...and this completes her third term. She would like to continue to serve unless another R N requests that position. They would have to take a press if they said she isn't going to leave those terms. Tommy Ward is in the public position. His term expires October 4, 2013, and he completes his third term. So no one's left until he is going to serve again. Uh, Marina Beasley is in the Doctor of Dentistry position. Her term expires December 6, 2013. This is her second term, and she would like to continue serving. Uh, Kim, do you have some additional nominations?
I did. Claudine Gibson is willing to serve in the in- vet number seat. Keep it forward. So please. And Claudia Birchfield has been a name that was presented to me as well. And Carol Millsaps' name had been presented to me as well for consideration in the R N position. These are just names. Uh, Dottie Cable was another name that had been presented to me for consideration.
Okay, and were you a confirmation?
I did not.
Okay.
You have, this is, uh... I don't know many next meeting. They have quarterly meetings, so I'm not sure, uh...
So we have recommendation, can you?
I don't have, I know we have recommendation Claudine Gibson to replace Evette Hoover, and I have spoken with Evette Hoover. This was her third term. So according to statute in CGS 138, 34,4, you know, she's going to serve three terms.
All right.
And, uh, Anthony Raymond, he can still serve as Commissioner. Anthony Dickmore can still serve if that's pleasing with the board. And then, like I said, Claudia, as far as Mel's position, and Tommy Ward, that's at the board. If he walked out of the board, Claudia Birchfield would be great. I think if she's sitting back there, you can ask her.
I saw her back there.
And I haven't asked her, and I apologize for that. I haven't spoken to her about the issue, but her name was given to me.
Claudia, would you be interested in serving on the?
I would go in, sir.
She would be in the board position.
Yeah, I heard.
She would be in the R N.
I think it's Carol Millsaps. She asked, said she...
She would be, she would like to serve on the board, yes.
And the city has, and that was, who's position?
Mel's.
And that was going to have a term.
Great.
Three terms. R N's. And more would serve. Claudia's would serve. Tommy Ward.
The remaining, he have Claudine Gibson, then Carol Millsaps, and then Millsaps' place. Claudine and Tommy Ward. You can hold on to Marina Beasley, or you can go ahead and put her in if that's on. That's a big step.
She's in her second term.
That's a big step, or you can go ahead and put her in at the same time.
All right, so please, it's a board, this, this... The tree was against the worst.
Commissioner Raymond Williams, Anthony Dickmore, Claudine Gibson, Carol Millsaps, Claudia Birchfield, and Marina Beasley.
That works for Claudia. She's in the public position.
Claudine Gibson is in the Doctor of Optometry. Claudia is in the public position.
Tommy Ward. Yeah, we're...
Claudine. Is that a conflict? No, I don't know if it's a conflict.
I don't see that it would be, seeing how it's, it's a separate board. If there were ever to be a, uh...
Do you ever know if it'd be a conflict for me? No.
If there, if there were ever to be a consolidation, then you might have to...
Actually, it'd be a wonderful thing, I think.
Right now in our current structure, I...
I agree with you. There's something, NC FAS coming out, and there happens to be, their application process has to be co-mingle. I think it would be an excellent idea for you all to be, be that first.
There's something in my mind tells me... I'm sorry, I have something to, to, I mean, I don't see it being a conflict in respect, you know, the...
She'd just be like, oh, sort of over. She, she wouldn't be like...
Absolutely, because it's not, it's not combined.
No.
That makes sense to me. Is that right, Claudia?
That sounds about to me, as she said, it will be co-mingle, and it has to be cohesive with those two boards, NC FAS. But now, I will say that I'd be willing to serve if that's the pleasure of the board. But if you see any conflict, please, uh...
So your feelings won't be hurt?
Not at all.
Well, I mean, you got your right.
I mean, this NC FAS really ties them really tightly down, you know, the two departments. And they use the same application.
Right.
And it ties them very tightly down, so...
When does it come off?
It's now.
When?
October 1, it's already on the board, and he's mad, remember?
All right.
October 1, and the director, they made a comment just on passing that it's going to be really important for cost training and having Medicaid workers in the Health Department because there'll be a, uh, a need for, uh, the Health Department workers to be able to process Medicaid applications. So it's going to be real vital that those two agencies are working open relationship. Maybe.
Well, I had the opportunity to hear Secretary Boss, and I'm pleased, and I didn't know that he'd already done a two-day to the Health, you know, being you.
Okay, all right. We satisfied of that lineup?
Yep.
All right, we have to have that before a motion is presented by the clerk.
Have a motion.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
All right, any question, discussion? Call approved, call opposed. Thank you very much.
Uh, next is, uh, just, uh, I need to know if you all would like for us to RSVP for attendance. The Gray Organization is going to be having their, uh, their board meeting on Thursday, September 26, 2013. It'll be at the Snowbird Community Complex at, uh, Dicky Snowbird's Hill Road. Uh, I have a flyer and, uh, information if you would like to go to that. I need to know by September 19, if you think that you would be able to, uh, attend the Gray Organization's meeting, uh, there on the 26th, so they can count on me. Uh, obviously, the Gray Organization's done a lot of good things to break down.
Yeah, I have this. I don't know that I can be, you know, or I can do that as much as possible. We can, they certainly have a lot there. That's just, uh, pass along the, or if you can go, uh, if you would like to.
Um, well, next is, uh, Western Highlands Smoke Mountain Center. Um, recently tonight, uh, it looked like I was going to need to confer to board commissioners and ask them to approve a board structure that was presented to us, uh, a potential board structure, I should say. Last, uh, month, the meeting in the Smoke Mountain, uh, Western Highlands, uh, actually that's just the Smoke Mountain, Mount Health Board. Uh, under the new law that is taking place, section 12111, the board structure for our representation on the Mount Health Board is changing. We, uh, with the acquisition of Smoke Mountain Center and Western Highlands Network, we are only allowed to have 21 members as a board as a whole. So what we wound up with is, uh, 11 members that can represent the counties, correct me if I'm wrong, sorry.
They don't have to be the county.
11 members that make a board composition, and the rest of it can make up, uh, four appointed, uh, members that can be done by the county. We were 160,000 dollars, 160,000 people short of being able to have broad representation on this board, and we could not get away with the state of North Carolina with the acquisition of this, uh, of the Western Highlands Network. Uh, area board now, under the new structure, shall have no fewer than 11 and no more than 21 voting members. The Board of County Commissioners and the Boards of County Commissioners in the area shall appoint members consistent with the requirements of the subsection B, and the process for appointing members shall ensure participation for each of the constituent counties of a multi-county area. The proposed board structure that they laid out for us, obviously, the Gray County did not have representation, neither did, uh, Swan County, neither did, uh, Jackson County did.
Yes.
Cherokee County did, and, uh, the, uh, it's, it's a cause of concern throughout counties because we appropriate money every year to Smoke Mountain Center, uh, to provide them, and also for us. Now we're faced with the likelihood that we're going to lose any representation or any say on the money that we provide. Granted, other counties, you know, they, they may contribute more to Smoke Mountain Center than Gray County does, but there's other counties like Haywood County that doesn't have representation that contributes quite a sum of money. In response to this, I spoke with Jack Horton, the manager in Macon County, and, uh, then spoke with Ryan Sheridan at the Southwest Division, and we felt it best that we pull together area, uh, the Southern Western Counties, county managers, and the board chairs, and have a very frank discussion on what, how do we proceed? Do we go with this alone? Can, can we approve a board structure where we have no representation, or we won't have representation for three years? What other counties are feeling the same way? According to the legislation, this board structure has to be approved by the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, I am trying to get clarification from Mark Bobson, school of government, as to whether or not it is a violation of the law. I can't get a straight answer. That's the sentence that's placed in written in a manner to, uh, draw the lines of what is violating the law, if the Board of County Commissioners does not approve it. All he says is that if the Board of County Commissioners does not approve the proposed board structure, that there is no plan. We doesn't see the indication. No one knows where we go from there. Do you have any extra thoughts on this, Chairman Edwards?
Let me kind of put it this way. They're asking that Smoke Mountain Center is going to absorb the old Western Highlands, uh, L E, it's now changed into an insurance company called an MCO. They basically decide who will get the services and who will not. They take the Medicaid money, and they decide which, uh, providers are going to get to provide the services. They're going to grow from 15 to 23 when they absorb, and they're going to change the representation from each of the counties that participate in the catchment area, having a vote on the board. They're going to take it down to one commissioner, and they're going to take it down and having 20 other peoples with various, areas of expertise, that being in insurance, that being in a hospital, that being in, uh, DSS services, that being in this, that, the other. It's quite a collection of individuals they decided who would be on there and who would not. And the contention from the guy from the smallest county in the catchment area is that it's a bunch of money for us to be on, uh, uh, on a, on a board where you're required to spend money, and you have no representation, period. So what they did, they threw a bone to the counties and said, "We're going to give you an advisory board." And we have members on the advisory board, Nikki Green from Jackson County, Ronnie Beal from Macon County, and various and sundry others. But that advisory board, it's clearly stated in the legislation, you have no authority on budget decisions, you have no authority on hiring and firing decisions, you have no say. So what it comes down to is by the law, by the statute that is presented, that if one county out of the 23 counties, out of the 15 counties decides to hop out, then they have no plan.
Hop out.
And my question is, is Gray County going to be the one to say no?
I'm glad to say that.
Or is Jackson County going to say no?
Or are we all?
Or are we all just saying no?
I don't know if to put one down, taxidermy and something, we have nothing.
Well, let me keep, let me tell you, tell you what the other shoe is, it's going to fall. The next thing it's going to fall is, they're going to try and say, "Well, what do we do for now? What do we do for now?" Because nobody knows. It's uncharted water. Do we want to think Gray County through that? Does Jackson County want to go through that? Does this, that, the, or are we all playing nice and think that we're going to be having any say still about what services or what service we do and do not get, and continue to pay into that? They have more employees than one place than we have in Gray County.
Yes.
And when they have all Western Highlands want to have more employees and a budget of how many millions? And I'm sorry, we have to have them in health services, and Becky, I know you're sitting there with your mouth shut, and we're going to lose advocacy, we're going to lose everything with people that need help. And Commissioner Holder, I didn't have any doubt that I brought it back, and you brought it, good, it's Gray, and I, I, but we're having a meeting for five.
Yes, sir.
Got to go in on, what, the 23rd?
Uh, that Monday.
On Monday, the 23rd. Uh, Greg's pulled together, um, county managers and chairs.
Yes, sir.
Of all the Southern Western Counties, they're all going to be there. I sent out the email today.
Yes, sir.
And there's going to be a decision made, and there's going to be what? And I'm telling you, my, my concern is chance with that, or we could burn.
Yes, sir. I mean, I, I don't see where we can go wrong, local state's facing to, to the fire on this.
But that means that we may have to go to court.
And, uh, you're exactly right, uh, but, uh...
Or a violation of law.
Well, that, that's not clear, and that's, that's what I can't get clarification on is, is there a violation of the law here? I haven't been told that there is. All I've been told is if you don't approve it, you don't have a plan, or they don't have a plan, and they can't proceed with, on with their board structure. So I think that this is going to be an item that comes up that the General Assembly is going to have to take a hard look at, uh, in the next session. Uh, I would dare say, as fast as things are moving in the, in the consolidations going to Mount Health in North Carolina, that, uh, we may be well over the, uh, population figure to have representation by then.
Well, to complicate, I don't want to talk all night, is that they set that by dates?
Yes, sir.
About when the merger with, uh, Western Highlands takes place? There's dates set, I think, April 14?
April, April 1 is the deadline, is the absolute deadline. They wanted it to be October 1 as long as the mergers were in line, but if they needed an extra 30 days or 60 days, they could grant that as long as everything was in place by the date April. So, uh, which, according to the folks at, uh, Smoke Mountain Center, they should be on track to hit that deadline before the April.
Unless some county decides that they're not going to?
Yes, sir. Unless someone doesn't play, play out.
What happens if they don't come to the board, and they just keep doing the same?
You know, I've, I have, uh, I've studied this, and the only indication that I can give is that if a, if a board fails to comply with the requirements of subsection B, which is the membership makeup, then the secretary shall appoint the unrepresented category.
Oh, they give us category? They give us people in that?
They give...
But it boils down to each individual county giving approval to the plan.
That's right.
If it's one county, you know, they have to collectively say, "Yes, it's not majority And my question is...
It's actually a consensus, but everyone has to agree.
That's it. Becky, what do you think? Please, just like that.
Really want to ask, or we talk as a stakeholder?
Yes.
I think it stinks. I think that, um, they're basically taking the governance out of the hands of... They're ta, they're, they're shifting their board to where decisions are made ultimately in the favor of the MCO, and they're not going to be serving them constituents. It, it's, it's a hot item for me.
I don't think it's an fairie's end in this session, but you know, it's the same way that anybody has asked.
Yeah.
And I'd ask for violence. So...
You know, they, they sell it as, you know, what they, what they put out for cat clients is, "Oh, this is a great thing because, uh, we're going to be able to be able to open more slots that were not open for years and years." Um, but I have seen already where there's picking and choosing based on how well families have cooperated in the past. I have, I know with one case, um, or you, or utilized, if they didn't utilize services in the past, they lost them, or they just can't get them. And instead of looking at what the true need is at the moment, maybe they didn't need it 10 years ago, 5 years ago. They need it now, they were told that they couldn't get it. And in this one particular case, the kid needs it. She needs the sports now, and she can't get it.
And, and you...
Now, that's just...
Hey, yeah, the thing that you used to have in the board, but what did you say?
Uh, well, they, they, they created a nominee. So what I, what I want to say is, is that, when our manager, myself, represents Gray County on an existing board right now, and it's possible that that will not exist...
In the coming months.
For coming months. So I'm not, there's no way that, you know, this board's around, I can see, you know, we have two out, but I don't know that full story. But I, you know, and I'm supposed to come get all the stuff, he's supposed to sell this to you.
Well, you didn't have it, come on.
We, we had a, a failing effort to sell something we don't like, and so it's, it's pretty tough to, uh, go on with.
To this stakeholder, it just seems like they're stacking a board. And that's just my opinion, it don't mean a thing.
You're right.
And I'm not speaking as a county official, I'm speaking as a citizen and stakeholder.
Hey, we were...
It looks to me like they're stacking a board.
Yeah. Right now, they're 15 in our catchment area, there's about 23 in whatever, see, the merger, Western Highlands merger does have to run down now. So we're going to have a meeting the 23rd this morning, and then decide what we're going to do as a, as a region. See, we're having issue about the population. You see, we're, what was, 164,000?
We're right at 164,000, uh, population under the threshold, which would allow us to have broad representation, every county would have representation. If you're underneath a 1.25 million catchment area, then you have to have a board structure that's laid out in that building. Well, that's not most of the county's power of representation by a commissioner or a direct commissioner appoint. I mean, if, if they would allow a, a finance director or a county manager who's under the direction of board commissioners to be represented, you, the county would still have representation because that is under your direction. Bunkin County's a... That's all I'll say. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not very well prepared for this tonight.
You're a generous gentleman, why?
Well, I mean, and I would ask, what I would ask the board, and I know this is clear to you tonight, I would ask that we have this meeting on the 20, on the, on the 23rd, and that I can get that information, create, get the information back, we're both being attendants, and to see what the feeling is in the region by no means, by no means do we want to jeopardize services for those in the county and region by any precaution. I would track that. I don't, I don't, I think it's based on, uh...
I'd hate my people on that. So if there's a big thing, can, if they're outlined, I would be, we're out there on the majority of the board, so it's whether...
Okay.
If it was one.
Yeah.
And I, 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 if I had done the homework better, I would have the composition of the board.
I'm very, very sorry.
Would you like to read those? He has to be on this 21-hand board, 21 person, probably.
This, uh, this is the, uh, this is discussed, this is stated as a draft, but this is what was presented to us. Michael Laviger from McDow County, who is a board commissioner, who is a commissioner there, presented this to, uh, to us at the meeting, uh, a few weeks ago. At least one member who is current, who is a current county commissioner, which Laviger had himself in that position. Uh, number two is the chair of local, uh, CFA, or the chair's designated CFA, it's an acronym for, uh, client. My super family advocate is pretty much a position in, in what I'm saying. Yes, sir. It's, it's a user of services for a guardian or parent of a, of a client. Uh, at least one family member of the CFA represented the interest of the following. An opening to, to, an open, clear consumer, healthcare expertise and experience in the fields of mental health, intellectual disability, or substance abuse. Janice Patterson, Lake County Health Carver's recommended for that. Healthcare administration, a Mr. Vine's contact, uh, they were contracted to form a consultant commission hospital, Bunkin County representative, uh, an individual with financial expertise. The current chair of the Smoke Mountain Board is Danny Jones, who is the county manager of Alexander County, so he was recommended for that position. Insurance, there's a Mandy Stone out of Bunkin County that was recommended for that position. On a side note, at the meeting, Danny Jones, uh, reached out to, uh...
Mr. Laviger.
Mr. Laviger asked me for 48 hours for us to be able to find a local insurance representative that could fill the, uh, the slot of, uh, the government insurance for Cherokee, Lake County. Uh, he was able to reach, uh, an individual who said he was going to serve, but we never saw that show up on, I was driving. Social Services of Joyce Edwards, from Colorado County, who's director of the SLO County. Attorney of Carolyn Coward, uh, works in Jackson County, but lives in Asheville. I'm not sure how she, they said how she was related to, related to the County, the attorney for Smoke Mountain Center, and she would be a board member. Uh, general public, Ed Charlton from Wilkes County. Uh, he, he was again on the executive committee, uh, and a, uh, president, L D, uh, MCO, fire council president, that's the, is a non-voting position. He, a provider representative on the board, and it's a non-voting position. Duncan Sondra was represented for our board, plus community services, of course, charity explained in Grand County, Lake County, although even in Macon, non-voting. Uh, administrator of a hospital, uh, Davis Gus Casey Cooper, Cherokee Hospital. Uh, Smoke Mountain Center at large members, the recommendation for Judy Poe from Ash County, Larry Cox from Higgin County, Ronnie Beal from Macon County, Nikki Green from Jackson County, and that made up roughly half of the composition of, uh, of the board. The other eight members, well, that's 13. The rest of the members will be selected by Western Highlands out of their catchment area.
So if we voted tonight, I had to ask you to vote on, we don't even know the area. And probably not the event until they merge.
No, sir. I don't see how they can ask any board county commissioners to vote until we have all the names and locations of individuals. So that's, uh, I'm not sure how much that will be discussed at the meeting next Thursday night.
People are going to attend that meeting? You won't be able to attend that meeting, sir?
I will.
I think I can, I can make it.
Okay. Uh, because that's going to be a very interesting meeting for us to have further discussion with them on. I would think that if it's imperative, we're going to be ready by October one, we're going to have to have that board structure in place. Again, with proof of county.
No action. Table that decision till we can get further information, sir. This is more... Okay, we'll take it to further information. Sorry to take so much time, Ben. It's important.
Let's find out to the MOA, please, not to...
Uh, MOU?
MOU, yeah, whatever. Donna Cody says it's okay as long as the board of commissioners agrees with the term and authorizes a manager capable to sign it. They have him, is known as the signatory. It can be changed to Chairman Edward T. of the Board of Commissioners, but it's okay with Manager K.
Okay, the MOU, as you're asking for, we're going to talk about a change of location.
No, this is just while they are occupying the space.
While they're in government.
At that part. Yes, sir. This MOU will not be necessary once they have their own space.
That's a good indication, aren't they, to look for their own space?
Oh, sir, we are, I could have pushed so long for that. Very much so.
Okay, great. Do we have a motion then, uh, for a memorandum of understanding for the use of facilities in the health department by the folks that are providing urgent care? Have a motion?
Yes.
We have a second. Any discussion or comment? All right, all approved. All taken.
Very well. I'll have it signed. Next is, uh, Congratulations Chairman Edwards, re-elected to as Board Director for District Seventeen, uh, for the Oklahoma Association of Association of Campaigners. Glad to be back on board, sir. Thank you for your service there. I got the information today about the legislative goals. The, uh, there was a lot of RFPs out this year in legislation for, uh, legislation's going to benefit the counties. Again, I'll have to report that one of the, uh, that was passed and signed by the governor was the one that, uh,
I took down here from the Lake House.
Right.
That's a, that's a really good bill. A lot of highlights coming out of it this year. And it's going to save me, me and Dr. Ross.
Yes, sir. So, thank you for your participation there, Chairman Edwards. Up next, I've got polls. First one is the board poll that was done in September with the twelve, two thousand thirteen senior center. This is for the wiring of the sign. The timers for all exterior lots and add twenty feet of twelve inch pipe. And, uh, no to the, uh, allowing the copper pipe that was put in there for the recycling to stay. And I just need to get a motion to approve.
We can find those after the senior senior.
You want to build them off?
With your help.
We do the air conditioning library warehouse included in that, if you sever.
It is the dollar bill.
Okay. All right. We'd like to include all those polls presented there.
On the rip rap, um, we have not expended as much money as we thought. And they have agreed to do the cover if we could instead of the rip rap.
Andy, you got something to say there?
Well, yeah, we'd like to do that, but we're not, we'd like to thank them, but we're going to go back and revision. Just come up with a couple more ideas along with the rip rap, parts of the rip rap.
You know, Ross, the steering committee's got to get it discussed and we were respectfully requesting that you table that until we get some better options by then.
That's really stupid. I went up there.
Yes, we're concerned about it.
Right. So, we'll take a look at a couple more options.
Okay, let me do some progress, I suppose.
If there is a drop in the cost, you know, it gets to quotes, you'd win a fair amount of money, you know, and then the real rap. And we hadn't extended any of my credit as much as we thought, we had some credits coming back. This all happened right at the end as I was packing it to him, Dave. And I apologized to Andrew Kegler, threw the curveball, he didn't know about it. And I forgot to mention it to him, so I do apologize for that one. But my thoughts have not been connected, and I'll say that out loud in public. But we'll table that one.
Okay, so good.
It's a play with...
That's on just the rip rap?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll table that one. Then do I hear a motion that we pass the poll motion, means we table those by poll and we're finalizing them tonight, as presented for the senior center, uh, center conference? No, that's separate. No, we didn't. Okay, all right, so those three. This is the conference, the air conditioning, the library, the warehouse, and the senior center wiring, the sign, the lights, and the pipe issue. Have a motion?
Motion.
Yes.
Do we have a second? Any discussion or comment? All right, all approved. All votes like a sign. Okay?
Next on the list is, uh, need to get a set resolution. I think we could certainly entertain a resolution, but we definitely would like to, uh, get a letter of support out in support of House Bill fifteen twenty-six. This is a bill that is going to extend Secure Rule Schools Act for two years. Uh, it also, every indication of the bill is that it's going to call the US Forest Service accountable on the amount of timber harvest that need to be coming out here. I, uh, read the bill. It's a good bill. Not sure how much resistance it's going to make after it gets to the House and the Senate, but, uh, I would certainly encourage the board to send a letter. And I can type it, I can send it, and we can even do a resolution. However you'd like to do it, in support of.
Steve, there were letters included in this?
Well, if I may, we just got high importance from this today, and I thought it'd probably be urgent information. If you'd go ahead and send the letter tomorrow, if it's the board's pleasure.
Right.
Yeah, go ahead and send the letter, and then I can back it up with a resolution, and I can go ahead, if you want to. I can prestand if you can sign it later, but he can go ahead. It's just been staying of high importance.
Okay, so we're talking about letters.
A letter of support going out is what they're asking for right now, and then I can get the resolution tied.
And also be mindful of this. I think that the House has only nine legislative days to take care of all the business of, uh, I think there's only four bills passed in this session. So, that means in the appropriations bills, there's only four out of eleven. So, they're going to have to do all of that in nine days, and I think the Senate has eleven days left. So, this is going to be a rush, push session if they get anything at all. And they're going to end up with a titty break, pushing, they're going to end up with this, that, the other. So, if we have a motion then, that we go ahead and have letter support sent out for Bill fifteen twenty-six that keeps our, uh, what is it, Secure Rule Schools lines?
Reauthorized Secure Rule Schools, yes, sir.
Do we have a motion?
Bill move.
Have a motion? Second, any other question or comment? Okay, all approved. Second, all votes like a sign. Thank you.
Excuse me. Next on the agenda is a column of the, uh, postcards that were sent to board commissioners, uh, in the mail in regards to the, uh, trade-offs in cats.
Did you receive this?
Okay, thank you.
Maybe thank you copies for the other board members, so if they wanted to thank you.
Uh, next on the list, uh, we have gotten a, uh, a request from, um, the neighborhood community, uh, Steve O. He has a request to name a bridge, Gold Mine Road, Hurley and Ethel Oak Bridge. He also had a request to rename the bridge as Puka Facet, Oak Hill Jesus Bridge. As you know, with D S V projects, bridges remain back for individuals who had a large impact on the communities. And, uh, this was presented to us to have consideration for writing the letter to, uh, to show support of naming these bridges out of those individuals.
You know, the decision, if I would have seen this, it may be in U T.
Yes, sir.
You know, I would be the last one to, I would not recommend, you know, something in this nation. But we've done this before, it's been burned down. So, uh, since this board, if the C U T wants to think that bridge, that's fine. I'm going to be, okay, all right.
We just have to authorize the type resolution, and this was the second, because it was my family, so I was not going to entertain that idea at all.
Right, right.
So, you know, you want to do with that finally.
I can make a motion. Let's make a motion. We will get, uh, new resolutions for these two. And if those have been cast on N C U T.
Yes, sir.
When they make those decisions. Do you have a motion? I made a motion. Is there a second? No, second? Is there a second? Yeah? Guys, let me, let me, let me. All right, next, please.
Next, we have the road naming board submitted, uh, several names here, a request and the approval from the board of commissioners. Road number one would be called Havenwood Lane. Uh, it's on Fluba Road, it's a dead end. Number two is Chestnut Coke Road. It's a Coke Road, and it's a dead end. Road number three is Icy Springs Road. It's a Beech Creek Road. It's a dead end road. Road name number four is Winter Lane, located, begins at Eto'o Road. It is also a dead end road. And road name number five is Winter Circle. It begins at Winter Lane and ends at Winter Road. Today, this is approved through board commissioners.
See, what is this to for a nine one one?
The road naming board, the nine one one road naming board assigns these names and asks if you agree.
Okay, that has to be, to be my question. All right, do we have a motion then to accept these and present it? Have a motion?
Yes.
Have a second? Any discussion or comment? All approved. All votes like a sign. Thank you.
Next, we have on the agenda, uh, as you know, the, uh, the old gas, fuel pumps that were behind the EMS base, the fuel pumps, those tanks, gas and diesel pumps are, uh, being removed from the EMS base for insurance reasons. Those tanks, uh, the idea, one idea was to do was just to surplus all of that, that equipment. You've got a gas pump and tank. From a county standpoint, I think that it would probably be in the best interest of the county. We don't need the tanks because a lot of fire crews. But in the event that we ever need a fuel, a pump and the coke, we would have that, uh, that pump there to replace someone in sanitation or another location, except maybe. They should have a buyout of the go tank.
And both of them might come off.
And that's a question that's brought up to me today. I don't even know that we can actually surplus because I don't have a definite answer. I believe I say that we don't necessarily know, but I need to find somebody to come and say that.
I'm pretty sure Duncan.
Duncan off the base.
I'm pretty sure. I'm not sure about the gas, but it's well, it may have given.
And I know that the, uh, the coke, coke keep were very expensive item. And, you know, that's, that's something that if we ever needed to incorporate back into a food delivery system, then we would need that, so. I could find out about the, uh, the pumps themselves. I, my recommendations would be kind of hold on to them. I talked to Robbie High about that pump. He said, look, if you don't use it, you're still there on dry rot. All you have to do is redo the seals in it. He said, that's heck of a lot cheaper than buying a new pump.
Is there, what is there kind of the new requirement of like?
No, I don't.
And the county may for it.
We pay for every, every time we prepare.
On the gas pump?
Yes.
On, on the gas pump?
Yes.
The diesel pump up there, I'm pretty sure, nothing but period.
We had to move.
We didn't have it on that day.
Move it down here, down here. We moved them. We, we heard the EMS, called EMS up there, and we don't...
We won't sell nothing in an hour, so.
I'm pretty sure Duncan.
Well, I think I've got that frame, I don't know if I have it on.
Well, the pumps and the tanks are definitely going to have to be moved.
Right.
Uh, whether or not the, uh, the pumps themselves are detached from the tanks, because we can't use the tanks. That's my understanding, because they don't need fire crews. Then if the pumps are ours, my recommendation is to store and keep, uh, in case we ever need it. And then if, I don't even know that we can surplus the tanks to be used for fuel. You may have answered that.
Would move it to the parking lot, would move it, you know? But we're still having a lot of trouble, obviously. Are you going to still have, uh, high tax on the cost?
I can't. Yeah, I mean, if, uh...
But they might move it before he does that.
As long as they're not damaged, I don't want to say Robert.
Yeah, I don't remember for sure, but I believe we just moved one.
The gas pump?
No, new car. New, good driver.
Oh, the gas pump, I heard say on the brother.
I believe, I think, but it's a fuel, a common car.
See, they've done it on that diesel tank?
I'm pretty sure they do, when we had problems with fuel down here, let Jamie come back.
I'll find out tomorrow.
We have to have to move away from that building.
Yeah, they asked a while.
Yes, sir.
Whether we move it or they move it, now I can get it.
And that car says that we've already dismounted it twice before.
Right.
So, it's inside the building.
I'll have more information on that when we're done. Okay. Well, we can't, we can sit on that. We can't let me sit and surplus something that's the longest. So, I guess we're going to have to take this as well, Tom. I'm glad they brought that up. So, thank the board of students who stayed in this room.
The other request I have here is a support request to have an honorary component of recycling board as representative of the school. And I need to get action on that.
I take a motion then, I'll make it, represent the school for recycling board. Have a second. All right, any discussion or comment? All votes like a sign. Thank you. Ms. Quay?
Yes, sir.
You and the whole business.
I have one thing. I've got to have a letter. I had an, Ernie Cole, is interested in cutting the hay off of our pork hill property. He doesn't want to charge anything, but I said I need you to have a letter made with Attorney Cody, F P P liability. And I did talk to Mr. Cole, and he said he would sign whatever he needed to sign, you know, for legal account, any liability, if he, if he's injured or anything, and so I'll give him credit for that. And I think that was all that I had on the...
What's your thought on that?
I think, no, we don't, we don't, I felt like it was our home.
Okay, that's fine. But, you know, for free, after we've had a big pain, I said that was bought.
Right. All right, we need to have a formal motion, then, to go ahead and allow all those conditions.
Allow a letter, a lot of...
That's safe.
I'm sorry?
Safe, you're open to him?
Yes, he does.
Okay, we have a motion then, we have Mr. Cole, uh, to, to push on. Are you sure about that, that's, that's... Okay, so we can, we can... Okay, of course, that's petition on, uh, letter, a lot of... All right, we have a motion? All right, we have a second. Have a second, any discussion or comment? Okay, all approved. All votes like a sign. What's his first name?
Ernie.
Ernie Cole. Any other, you or the whole business?
I got one quick item, sir. This is just, uh, for your information. There has been another request from Stan for an E D C funding request for more training. This is a training scope where Gold Lee came back. It looks like Gold Lee just want to approve it, but they're forcing Stan to reach out to other entities in the community to allow them to come and take part in the training. Before they would even consider funding.
Can Andy brought something to us, Mr. Quay, who had taken it in our space? It's been advertised in the paper.
It, Stanley was getting a little bit ahead of himself with, uh, with how this, this process has to get proper approval. And the E D C board has to get Goldlieg approval and ultimately, the United States Board of County Commissioners approval for any funds improvement. Uh, Goldlieg came back and told Stanley, look, you know, we understand that the trainings are important, we want to see more community involved. You know, we funded a training session last time, uh, by our indication, there wasn't enough media outreach to get them, more members of businesses in the community involved. Uh, this time they had to go back and reach out to multiple businesses. I know that, uh, out of the numbers, some representatives this time have come down, uh, take part in the training, by having been passed. Uh, they have reached out to, uh, the Ford Hill. Uh, I don't have an indication whether or not they're looking to see anybody. So there's going to be a lot of dedicated time allowed for the other businesses in the community to come in and take a part of this. So, uh, workforce education and, uh, training efficiency obviously are vital to any industry that's success. And there will be patterned those to their specific type of businesses, uh, to have a funding. It looks like Goldlieg is going to approve this as long as they've had the parameters. And whenever that takes place, I'll be coming to the board commissioners for Andy asking for, uh, approval of the grant request. And I don't have a dollar in them with me right now. But it will not believe, it will not be a third of two hundred thousand dollars.
But they can't, what worries the county business? I mean, I understand that one of those things, again, and we don't have a portable standard game, not the money from a part of the county.
Right.
But it has to come through the county, is that right, Mr. Quay?
Exactly.
Will it be closer?
Well, it's, it, what happens is Stanley makes their lease payment, which goes into the E D C bank account and each month. And so we're accumulating balance, and then if Goldlieg approves it, then they'll authorize me to write the checks to the training company. So we get, it's totally a flow through, it's just there's, most grants, you get the money, you buy that.
Right.
This grant, you get the money, you hold it. And then we write it out, whatever the E D C and Golden Lake give approval.
Okay, so is it the same cycle that was been in before?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
It works just like.
And you have had action on this previously, you always have the impression, so what they basically did was they offered it to the county. Is that what I'm saying? They offered the services of the, the training to county department heads?
One time before.
Yeah, one time before, they offered to department heads, and they, they made an attempt to reach out to some of the businesses. And there wasn't as much involvement as in. It wasn't designed as much, you know, to really target some of those industries. And this time, when they came back and asked for the, uh, the specific funding request, Goldlieg said, well, sir, we got to have businesses, uh, and other entities committed.
Okay.
On this funding, before willing, under ninety dollars.
So that's just to make it, it said it looks like they're going to fund it, but they need the board's approval, that this can go through county powers against that.
Once Goldlieg gives their blessing, I'll be coming to the county commissioners asking for yours.
All right.
That's all I have.
And the reason for that is that they are not on the authority, they're just a commission that are, they're in need for umbrella. So they have to have your blessing and the board commissions because they're not on the authority.
Okay. All right. All right, do we have that formal motion then, that we can approve? Approve this and present it on the train?
Not yet.
Not yet, sir.
It's open.
I need to have confirmation from Goldlieg. All right, good. You bring it to us later.
Yes, sir.
All right, I don't want, anything else? Okay, do I have a motion to go over into post session thirteen, one forty-three, ten eighteen, eleven, eight, one, three, six, we're just coming in. I think you. Hurry, find personnel, contract, we'll have any personal issues, not. So we're taking, with the five minute recess. All right.